Okay, the time is now six forty-five. A call to order the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget. There, uh, this was, was scheduled after our, uh, budget hearings back in, in November. Uh, were required by, both by statute and by the Home Roll Charter that to have a, a public hearing on the budget that has been advertised and, uh, provided for public comment. So is there any public comment here tonight on the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget? Okay, and Joyce, do we have anybody by Zoom that would like to comment on the budget? Okay, so maybe sixty seconds, uh, public hearing, and I'll adjourn this public hearing. Thank you. We will begin the, uh, regular council meeting at seven o'clock. Now a call to order, uh, this December eighth, two thousand twenty-two, our regular meeting of Borough Council. We will begin with the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance to the flag, uh, by Deputy Mayor Landis.
Thank you all for coming this evening. This is, uh, very exciting to see all these bright faces. Um, so I didn't, uh, so a lot of times I use this time to advocate for something, um, large and thoughtful. And there's been a lot of stuff in the news, and so this is a moment of silence. So, uh, these are some things that I've been silently pondering, and so I just thought I'd bring that up. But also because you're all here and you're here, a lot of you are here for a very special reason. I think it's actually quite topical. I've used this time to talk about mass shootings, and there's been quite a few of those recently, and I could use it again to bring focus to certain aspects of that. Carlisle itself has also had some gun violence, uh, that has unfortunately, uh, touched the lives of youth in our community, um, which is extra concerning. Um, and then other news that I've read, uh, in a neighboring municipality, uh, uh, horse and buggy was hit by a car. And so I think a lot about our vulnerable, uh, residents, uh, in multiple ways. And I try to advocate thoughtfully, and sometimes I come up here and I, I bring up ideas. Um, I don't really have ideas tonight. Uh, but because all of you are here and you've all actually done things that, um, you're going to be recognized for tonight. Uh, I think that this is a really good night to think about how we can work together, and I don't always have all the answers. And we don't have all the answers, but I think collaborative work and connecting with community is the best way that we can possibly, be the strongest, uh, community we can be to move forward on good things. So I'll just take a moment to think about how we can keep doing that. I'm here to chat afterwards, too. My email is landis@carlislepa.org. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, the roll please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
Mayor Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Fisher Henderson?
Here.
And Mr. Powers?
Here.
One item not on the agenda. We don't have Counsel Perry here, uh, in our, in our presence physically, but she is by Zoom. So I will need a motion to permit, uh, Counsel Perry to attend this meeting by video conference. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? Second, second by Counsel Stube. Any comment? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. Sir, good to, good to have you. And, uh, can I, can I say congratulations?
Uh, yeah, well, we won't say why right now. Thank you.
Next up, we have, uh, Sergeant, Sergeant Shaw, if you'd like to come to the podium, uh, with civilian appreciation awards.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Borough Staff. I'm here on behalf of Chief Landis this evening who couldn't make it. Uh, we wanted to recognize several members of our community that have helped the police department and the community at large throughout the last year. First, I would like to call Lily Duarte Evans. Would you please come up here? So Lily works for the Carlisle Y W C A, um, and we have called upon her several times in the last year. As soon as she introduced herself to us, we took advantage of it. On February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, around fourteen forty-three hours, Carlisle Police Department responded to a domestic assault. The female victim had been strangled during the altercation in the home. The suspect was arrested on scene, but police soon after learned that the suspect had been given bail that would allow him to be released. This caused one of our police officers great concern, knowing that the, the perpetrator was going to be out of jail so quickly. So the victim was contacted by the police department, and we began packing items for her and her family, and they arrived at the Carlisle Police Department. There, officers contacted Lily, Director of Y W C A Sexual Assault/Rate Crisis Services. Officers were aware that this incident didn't align with what Lily would normally handle, but she immediately came to the station and assisted police. I was there, and I think she was at our station in about fifteen minutes. Lily was able to secure emergency shelter for the victim and her three children. Her actions greatly improved the victim's safety and was a prime example of selfless commitment to working with the Carlisle Police Department to help victims of domestic violence and the children of our community. It is refreshing to know that we have people like Lily to champion a very worthy cause. Therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department would like to recognize Lily Duarte Evans with the Carlisle Police Department Community Service Award. Corinne and Jeremy Bowers, would you please come to the front? Since two thousand twenty, the Carlisle Police Department has been accepting donations of gifts from the community to support our holiday mission, spreading gifts and cheer to children involving, involved in Big Brother, Big Sister, and children that reside in our shelters. Starting in two thousand twenty, the Bowers family has supported our mission, generously donating around one hundred Lego sets each year. They worked throughout the year purchasing Lego sets, and they delivered them to our department early in the planning phase for the year's holiday events. The Bowers selflessly spend hundreds of dollars a year to support a community they aren't a part of. They do not live in the borough of Carlisle. They travel from a neighboring county just to support our department because we are active in the holiday season, and they are excited to be a part of it. Therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department would like to recognize Corinne and Jeremy Bowers with the Carlisle Police Department Community Service Award. Next, I would like to call upon Ms. Gina Hayes. If you don't come up, then I'll just come and get you and bring you. So our department wanted to recognize Gina. She's the owner of Kimberly's Cafe, if you're not aware, in Carlisle. Um, this is just for specifically a recent event, but Gina has been a proud supporter of our department, uh, for quite some time. She is very, very friendly with all of us, and she makes excellent food that feeds us on a daily basis almost. On Thanksgiving this year, the Carlisle Police Department was provided a delicious feast prepared by Gina Hayes, owner of Kimberly's Cafe. Most importantly, officers that were on duty were able to sit and share a meal with some of their family that were able to come in as well. Gina has shown to be a proud supporter of the Carlisle Police Department, and we all truly appreciate her efforts. And again, I think it's important to note, you know, some jobs are, are that such that you're working on a holiday. And not only was she likely not with her family all day, she made food so that our officers had their wives, husbands, and even children came into the police department and could eat with their family member in the station on Thanksgiving Day. And that's just incredible. So therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department, especially Corporal Sturm, would like to recognize, would like to recognize Gina Hayes for outstanding service and the Community Service Award. Chance Keller and your mother Angie, could you please come up to the front? He's, okay. How you doing, young man? Good? You just stand over here with me, okay? On June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seventeen twenty-two hours, that's five twenty-two P M. Chance here was walking on the sidewalk outside an apartment building near two fifty-one A Street in the borough of Carlisle. Chance observed a man inside his apartment laying on the floor, having an apparent medical emergency, and he took quick action to help the man in distress. Chance alerted his mother, Angie Keller, and the two of them were able to make entry into the apartment through an unlocked door. The victim was located in the apartment, and the two called nine-one-one requesting emergency medical services, prompting an additional police response. Cumberland Goodwill EMS and Officers Tadaro, Corporal Sturm, and Corporal Mayor of the Carlisle Police Department arrived on scene. The victim was assessed by EMS personnel and transported to the hospital. Chance's quick actions demonstrate a high level of responsibility to fellow men and the community. The Carlisle Police Department and the community at large appreciate acts of selfless service demonstrated by Chance and his mother Angie. Therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department would like to recognize Chance and Angie with the Carlisle Police Department Community Service Award. Mr. Jim Griffith, could you please come to the front? Mr. Griffith portrays the role of Santa Claus during the holiday season and provides his services to the Carlisle Borough Police Department on his own free time. For several years, Mr. Griffith has coordinated the department with the department to ensure his schedule is clear, and he can attend the several holiday events the department holds for the community. Mr. Griffith's role of Santa Claus brings cheer and joy to the hearts of many children and us adults in the community, and they are always excited to interact with him. Mr. Griffith's selfless service to the community plays a vital role in the Carlisle Police Department's ability to give back to the community. Therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department would like to recognize Mr. Griffith with the Carlisle Police Department Community Service Award. Nathaniel and Jennifer Everett and Simone McCray, could you please come to the front? Front and center. On January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, around zero eight hours, Jennifer and Nathaniel Everett checked their front porch after hearing their doorbell ring twice. The couple observed an elderly female sitting on their porch with no shoes on. The weather was very cold, around ten degrees, and the ground covered in ice and snow. The couple invited the female into their home to protect her from the elements. They observed that the female was confused, and believing the female may be homeless, they contacted Simone McCray, the outreach coordinator with Community Cares. Simone responded to their home to assist them with caring for the woman. Simone was aware the Carlisle Police Department had posted a missing endangered elderly female with dementia on Crime Watch earlier in the morning. Simone confirmed that this was the female police were attempting to locate. The Everets assisted Simone with loading the female into her vehicle, where, into Simone's vehicle where she was transported to Carlisle Cares. There, Simone provided the woman with dry socks, shoes, a jacket, and blanket. She then drove the female to the Carlisle Police Department where she assisted us in reuniting the female with her family. The honorable actions of Jennifer and Nathaniel Everett were instrumental in the safe location and the return of the woman to her family. They went above and beyond, inviting a stranger into their home and making quick decisions, alerting the appropriate resources to assist the woman in need. Alight, Simone's actions and quick thinking were instrumental in the safe return of the female to her family. Her ability to recognize that the female was in need of further assistance and to identify her as the missing person reported by the Carlisle Police greatly assisted, assisted the Carlisle Police Department's efforts. Simone exemplifies the true meaning of community care, and she went above and beyond to assist a fellow community member in need. Therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department would like to recognize Jennifer and Nathaniel Everett and Simone McCray with the Carlisle Police Department Community Service Award. Thank you. Tayon, are you here? How you doing, young man? So the Carlisle Police Department, we were, uh, we were in touch with Lamberton Middle School, and we were looking for a student that sticks out and, uh, is just a stellar performer and a great citizen in the school. Uh, didn't take one of the assistant principals at Lamberton very long at all to tell us about Tayon Harris here and, uh, how he's been a great role model and a leader in the school and a great asset to the teachers and the other students, and your, uh, your performance is just outshining everyone else. So we wanted to do something nice for you. Um, the Carlisle Police Department wanted to give a bicycle to you, so Officer Primus here is wheeling that out for you. That way you can go to and from school in style. Mr. Robert Winston? Mr. Robert Winston is being recognized for outstanding service to the Carlisle Police Department by serving on the Hiring Interview Panel on September twenty-ninth and thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. This is presented by Chief Police Terrell Landis. Thank you, sir. Patrick Shadle? This is the last one, by the way. On June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at zero nine fifty-one hours, the Carlisle Police Department responded to a structured fire at seventeen East High Street. Patrick Shadle, at great risk of his personal safety, began evacuating residents from the large apartment building before the fire department and police arrived. This was the Wellington Hotel. Shadle suffered from minor smoke inhalation and was treated by EMS at the scene. Shadle's selfless actions greatly affected the outcome of this situation, saving multiple residents from a fire. Therefore, the Chief of Police and the entire Carlisle Police Department would like to recognize Patrick Shadle with the Carlisle Police Department Community Service Award. Thank you so much, sir. And again, I just want to, uh, say thank you one more time to everybody that was able to make it tonight. Um, we're very proud to honor your service to the Carlisle Police Department, and it's because of members of the community and even outside of the community like you that make our jobs that much easier and more enjoyable. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant Shaw. Thank you to the department for bringing these awards forward. Um, thank you to every one of you for your bravery, um, your, your initiative, your leadership, um, your, your beard. So much, I mean, we can't, we can't thank you enough for, for what you've done for this, this community. And this may be the, maybe the widest age range we've seen in, in, in awards. And that's more, more because of the younger ones. I'm not commenting on the, on the others' ages. Thank you all very much. Feel free to stick around with us for a bit because we're gonna, we're gonna run through some, some other, uh, other items on the agenda. That was a setup. Oh, I should, and I should recognize we have, uh, former Counsel Deborah Fulham Winston here with us today. Hi, Dan. Thank you. Well, we'll wait a moment. Why, why don't we recess for five minutes? Well. Okay. Suddenly quiet. Thank you. Jennifer, thank you for sticking around. Uh, we will move on to, uh, opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. So this is an opportunity, uh, for anybody who would like to speak on any issue of, of, for our government to come forward and, um, provide any comment they, they wish to make. Is there anybody here in Borough Hall? And is there anyone by Zoom? Okay, thank you. Uh, onto the consent agenda. So this, uh, list of routine items, which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on in one motion by their current form if discussion is desired on any particular item. Any member of council or the public may request the item to be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Is there anybody requesting that an item be removed and considered separately? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel, Counselor Hicks. Any comment? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. So that means for those here in Borough Hall, everything on the, the white page has, has been approved. Uh, next on to the, the blue pages, the regular agenda, uh, first table continued and recurring items. We have two, uh, tabled items. Uh, is there a, uh, is there a motion to, uh, remove, uh, item number one from, from the table?
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Hicks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Is there a motion to remove item number two from the table?
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Hicks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mellon. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion, motion passes. So we will consider those, those two items under, uh, sustainability and community planning later on in the agenda. Um, next up, under the Mayor's report, um, before we get to what is on the agenda, uh, we have a couple of items that are, a couple of resolutions that are critical and, uh, time sensitive on, uh, issues involving our, uh, sanitary, uh, sewer and our wastewater treatment plant. So, uh, Mark, if you'd like to describe those for us, uh, explaining the critical and time-sensitive nature, and then we can, we can consider a, a motion to add these to the agenda.
Sure, I would be happy to. Uh, so, um, there are two items that we're requesting to be added to the agenda. They are both resolutions associated with, uh, submission of grant applications for funding for capital improvement projects that are on, um, that are included in the Borough's two thousand twenty-three budget. Uh, the grant application deadline is in two weeks, and that application requires a resolution of council listing the amount of the grant and also, um, authorizing the submission of the grant application. Uh, we, we, um, recently worked with, uh, K S A, uh, consultants to put that grant application together and didn't get it in time, um, for the regular agenda.
And, and both items are, are, uh, as Mr. Mallard mentioned, in, in the, uh, the proposed, the proposed budget. Uh, and although there is a match to the, to these grants, uh, both of them, uh, we'd be expending the funds regardless. So we're better off getting, getting a grant. Uh, so I will make a motion, uh, that council amend the agenda for the December eighth, two thousand twenty-two Borough Council meeting to approve two resolutions authorizing submission of two grant applications to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for capital projects included in the two thousand twenty-three budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube. Is there any comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And that motion passes. Uh, now I'll make a motion on the resolutions themselves. I move that council approve two resolutions authorizing the submission of two grant applications to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for capital projects included in the two thousand twenty-three budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stube. Is there any, uh, public comment? Is there any comment from council? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Uh, on to the, the, uh, the rest of the agenda. Uh, we have a zoning density discussion we're, we're going to take up. I'm not sure who is going to lead that, that discussion. Deputy Mayor wants to take it away?
I'll start it, and then maybe Jared can pipe in some thoughts and some other. Um, uh, this is, um, an area that I just, uh, had on, um, on our goals and need, maybe need some focus and definition of, of how we would approach it because it is a, a big, heavy lift. So a, a few things, uh, to think about when we're thinking of zoning is lots of things that we, we vote on here are, uh, related to zoning and, um, you know, new developments. We have some developments on this particular agenda. Uh, those developments look a certain way and feel a certain way, um, because of the zoning that we have. Um, and so if we are thinking about our Climate Action Commission, we're thinking about the work of our, uh, Truth and Reconciliation Commission, and we, uh, really hold these, um, these guiding documents and these guiding, guiding, uh, community bodies, um, as important, then thinking of how we can then change some of our policies to adapt and, and make sure that, um, we aren't, uh, missing opportunities. And that's my concern is that the missing of opportunities when we have these things that we, um, are approving, and, uh, they could be maybe better. So, um, a few things to think about that, that we were, uh, that we were thinking about, um, is that we have, um, a pretty built-out community. Um, so we can't build out anymore. So, uh, also there's, um, the question of density. That does not mean that we're going to be planning large skyrise buildings, but, um, allowing different types of density in different neighborhoods allows, but allowing different types of density in different neighborhoods allows different affordable options. That's not saying huge affordable housing structures, but affordable housing is whatever you personally can afford. So thinking of how we can make sure that different folks of different backgrounds have the ability to move wherever they want in the borough. And also, we have a beautiful, beautiful historic downtown. But current zoning was made, you know, in the 1900s for the most part, and it doesn't always blend well. You can tell something that was recently built compared to something that wasn't because of setbacks and things like that. So some of the things that Jared has helped outline are some, I think, quicker things that we could look at and adjust to ensure that we are thinking about what we want Carlisle to be in, in our land use. And then some long-term things that might take much more work with staff, and obviously, like, I'm here for it. I'm not sure what other elements of it I'm missing, but, but those are the key things. I mean, there's also places, I mean, I, I have my pet, my pet focus in the gas station downtown that's, that's, you know, abandoned is one. I'm like, someday someone's going to want to develop it, and our zoning might limit us as to what we could do there. And yet, it's like a critical element right there on High Street that we could do something really wonderful. But if we don't think ahead and make some adjustments to ensure that there is some flexibility to get what we are hoping for, for the future, I feel like we're, we're missing opportunities. So this is about trying to think about how we can not miss opportunities and also do it in an incremental way.
Mr. Wallston, the floor is yours.
Okay. I, I put together sort of an à la carte menu of zoning reform techniques, short and long range things that maybe council could consider and give staff some direction. You know, I, the, the shortcut for this meeting is just to ask if there are any questions. But I could probably give you sort of a broad, high-level overview of the memo for the benefit of the public. What I tried to do is sort of consider what, what, what's envisioned in the comprehensive plan that the borough has adopted and what hasn't, you know, what hasn't happened in the community that was in that enabling document, and what was planned in the Climate Action Plan and wasn't included in the final policy document. And, and that's sort of the beginning of the document basically says that there are two forms of zoning, basic forms of zoning, Euclidean zoning and Form-based code. And Euclidean zoning basically says that we're going to zone the externalities that could come from your property and affect your neighbors and sort of anticipate what, what you're doing as a land use activity and kind of go from there. And Form-based code considers the built environment and the effect on the public realm. So that's sort of the primary focus, and the secondary focus is land use. To try to advance some of the things that have been talked about in the comprehensive plan and the Climate Action Plan, walkability and some different things that are less, less car-centric. I, I wrote up maybe a dozen different items that potentially could be considered by staff in the short term, six months to a year, and in the longer term, a year to five years. So I'll just run through the list. The first, and I'll, I'll just preface this by saying, these are nationally recognized zoning reform practices, and they'd have to be tailored to Carlisle. Part, part of the reform process, and I keep using that word, it's a proper word, but it's also a trigger for people. It acknowledges that there are certain markets in Carlisle that haven't been unlocked, that there's some dead weight loss in our markets that could be enabled by some changes. And whether or not we want to enable those changes is your responsibility, I'm just staff. So number one, removing minimum lot sizes to match historic lot sizes. Carlisle was, was platted quite some time ago, the original plaque of Carlisle. Since then, we've had a lot of subdivision that's happened throughout the borough, and some of the zoning is not, does not reflect the historic patterns within the community. Some of the zoning is more geared to suburban development. So we're talking, you know, big setbacks and big lots and big houses and that kind of thing. And that is not necessarily inappropriate in some places. So, what, what, what I'd like you to consider as you sort of wade into this is the context within different parts of the borough. Okay, so it's not necessarily a bad thing to have some suburban-style development in different parts of the bur- borough and urban-style development in other parts. But if the zoning is getting an inconsistent pattern of growth and we're getting things that we don't necessarily want, then maybe it's time to make some changes. So historic lot sizes might, might not necessarily be what we have in the current zoning ordinance. And really, the only relief to go back to that old pattern of development rather than just doing what's in the zoning ordinance is to go to the zoning hearing board and seek variance. It's costly, it takes some time. The rational thing to do is probably just go with what's in the zoning ordinance and not go and seek a variance. So that's something for council to consider. Do you want to go with the historic patterns of development by right? Or do we want to consider more suburban-style development by right? Historic setbacks, this is another thing to consider. A lot of the borough downtown areas have buildings that are proud to the street. Other parts of the borough, the buildings are far the setback. But the zoning doesn't always sort of reflect those historic patterns of development. And the other point that I tried to make is that, you know, there's sort of a difference between minimum and maximum setbacks, and I get into that farther into the, into the memo. But basically, if the zoning ordinance requires a 20-foot setback and a historic pattern of growth is zero to eight feet, then it, it warrants maybe some discussion on having that as the, you know, requirement to be farther back in the historic pattern of development, particularly if that's what the borough wants. I also recommend maybe considering codifying stories instead of maximum building height. So what this does, it basically defines a story and allows a builder and an architect some flexibility in how they actually construct a building. And it's not so restrictive when it comes to sort of squishing something into a maximum height. But it also gets a consistent pattern of, of, of development. So the, the analogy or the example I used is a 35-foot height maximum, which doesn't necessarily dictate stories or roof type, and you can get a, a squatty, you know, three-story building or a great big two-story. So, consider regulating your, your preferred building type for better-looking and, and functioning buildings, so ventilation, sunlight. Maximum front setbacks, I alluded to that just a minute ago. So a 20-foot setback in the zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily mean that you can't go 50 feet back. And what we see in a lot of car-oriented suburban development is you'll, you'll have a zoning ordinance standard of 20 feet. The developer will go as far back as they can into the back of the lot, and they'll put the parking proud to the front. And that sort of signals to motorists that, you know, this is a suitable place for me to drive to. It doesn't necessarily invite a pedestrian to go into that development. So if that's something that you want to encourage more pedestrian and active transportation patterns, then you want to encourage the buildings to be a little more, more proud to the street. So, that's maximum setbacks. Or the, the other term is a, a build-to zone. So you'd say, here, here's the zone from the front setback to a certain point where it's okay to put your building by right. And we're not necessarily prescribing, you know, a, a maximum setback. Again, talking about a pedestrian-oriented and encouraging walkability. Another standard to maybe consider is to require that a pedestrian entrance is oriented to the sidewalk or to the street. What we get sometimes with suburban-style development is a big parking lot, you know, and sort of a strip mall. Or even worse, and I shouldn't use terms like that because it shows bias, but potentially. What you sometimes get, even if the building is proud to the street, is the back of the house. You know, you'll get the building that's proud to the street and the parking lot on the reverse side with no pedestrian entrance to get into it from the sidewalk. That doesn't necessarily get the result that you want, and it doesn't create that sort of public realm that's sort of inviting to people. It, it can also sort of be detrimental in some ways to making sort of a unsightly appearance, appearance from the street. Whereas if you have a, a pedestrian entrance from the street side, it's just more inviting. So that's one thing to maybe consider. Maximum or, or, or minimum transparent, transparency in retail context. Carlisle does a pretty excellent job of this downtown. You know, we got windows all over the place. There's maybe a couple of things to consider. Requiring minimum transparency in the historic district can potentially be a bad thing. You end up, you know, removing some architectural features that are really important. But in other contexts, new builds and things like that, a minimum transparency can allow a customer, a pedestrian from the street to look in. It's like, it's like going to a, a public park and having no entrance and sort of being confused about why I would even go in. Your storefronts ought to have some, you know, visibility. So you can sort of require that. They call this fenestration, which is just a fancy word for windows and doors. Minimum parking. No, this one's going to be a little dicey, so take a deep breath. Minimum parking requirements. I promised I'd stop short of saying it's hocus pocus, but there it is. Minimum parking requirements are, you know, sort of a planner and engineer's method of adding some science to Euclidean zoning. So we add some performance standards. We basically say, if you have a land use of a certain size, then we sort of predict that you're going to have a required parking demand. There's not a lot out there that supports planners knowing more about the market demand for parking than banks and developers. So, I gave you a couple of options in the memo. You can sort of reduce or get rid of parking requirements in certain contexts, whatever you feel comfortable with. You could also sort of consider an impact program. And I use the term in this rational nexus between public and private gains. So this is for any impact requirement, impact fees, things like this. Or if you say, if you provide X amount of motorist parking stalls, you also have to acquire, you also have to provide a certain amount of bike parking spots. There have to, has to be some sort of rational nexus between, you know, the, the public impact. So that's maybe one thing to do, is, is to sort of look at what we have as a parking requirement and use that as a bargaining chip, knowing that developers are probably going to want some parking. Context-sensitive streets. I, I just said something very basic for this one, just to start planning your desired streets to prepare, prepare for local and state improvements. So the state and, and the borough have capital improvement projects, you know, paving projects, things like that. It probably makes sense to start planning what you want to do with the geometry of the street before that entity's ready to spend money. So if they can see that the borough's got a policy document, they can use that as a guide. Land use. I suggested permitting mixed use for smart growth in every urban context. So that's downtown main streets and all urban neighborhoods, and I want to sort of define neighborhood as much as I can. There are a lot of definitions for neighborhood, so I'm going to insert mine. I think a neighborhood should have a center, and it should have a boundary. And that boundary is not necessarily something that, you know, staff would dictate. We'd reach out to the public and ask them to tell us what they think their neighborhood boundary is. And this isn't necessarily a block or a subdivision. This is a, a, a boundary where people have access to things that, you know, that they need or that they want. It could also be a boundary that shows the things that they want and need aren't there. You know, so neighborhood boundaries are maybe something to consider. And when I say urban neighborhoods, I, I italicize something that I think is sort of important. It's not recommended in suburban contexts. So what you maybe want to consider is that some parts of the borough have residents that are totally satisfied with the suburban context and don't necessarily want a variety of uses. Where this is potentially most powerful for infill development and densification is in urban areas that potentially have, you know, standards that make it so that you could do a commercial development, but it makes it tough in the zoning ordinance to do a residential development. And there are some examples of that in the borough where, you know, it, it, it apparently is, finds the citizens to have a mixed-use pattern of development with shops and restaurants on the first floor and offices and, and apartments above. But by right, you can only do commercial, and then through special exception and some other hoops, you can do apartments. So you might want to consider adding a, a variety of, of uses in all urban contexts. I also recommend simplifying land uses. This, this one's a tough one in, in Euclidean zoning in particular. Planners will try their best to define every type of land use they can think of and, you know, bury it in the zoning document. And for those uses that can be predicted, it works okay, you know. But the things that emerge that it turns out people really want to do, you know. Sometimes the zoning ordinance can be difficult. It can be a barrier to those new markets. So what you might want to consider is sort of looking at the zoning ordinance and consider, you know, are we putting too fine a point on some of these land use definitions? Are some of these things redundant? Why do we allow this here but not here? If it's the same context or similar. So that's maybe something to look at. And then map the places, and this is probably, you know, consistent with my recommendation to look at neighborhoods. There are parts of the bur- borough that are going to have completely different contexts, and you'll be able to sort of map them out and then sort of describe what makes them different. And you'll, you'll probably need to do that with the help of the people that live there. Okay, so stakeholder engagement is key for mapping those places and considering the context. And I'll just conclude by saying my short-term recommendations to consider out of this à la carte list. Number one, replace minimum setbacks with a maximum front setback. Again, using the, the built pattern and what's sort of desired as a guide. And what that'll do is make it so that the people that just sort of want to build like their neighbors have built and what the borough thinks is suitable, they'll get to do that by right rather than having to go for variance. Number two, require parking behind buildings and a working door facing the street. And again, that encourages a more pedestrian-oriented development pattern and is maybe less desirable for car-oriented development. And number three, review those allowed uses and permit compatible. And number three, review those allowed uses and permit compatible activities in most urban districts. And again, we might have a lot of these uses that are desired in those urban contexts. But there might be some barriers that are inappropriate, that you maybe could make easier for people. And then long range, so we're talking more than, you know, one to five years. And I'll tell you, I got like a hand cramp writing, writing some of these things, but. You know, the first one to consider is a master plan or comprehensive plan update or a rewrite. Now, this is within the council's biennial goals to, for, for staff to sort of provide some recommendations on how that would look. And for you to consider next steps. Number two is borough-wide neighborhood plans. So it, it, once you identify those areas of the borough that you can say it's, it's got a name, it's got a context, it's got all those things. Start planning some improvements with a lot of feedback from the people that live there. And then the third one, and this is where my hand really cramped, a full zoning ordinance rewrite. That's, that's a big undertaking. That's where I'll stop.
But, but you wrote it down.
I did write it.
Borough manager Armstrong, this, this is why you hired him. Because that was, that was great. Thank you so much for the, for the overview. I have, I have some thoughts. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, okay, steal anybody's thunder here, but one. I think our, I think there are several, if not all of us, agree that the comp plan needs, needs an update. I know on the Climate Action Steering Committee, we've, we've discussed, discussed that, that need. Two, I think a lot of these things overlap with a couple of initiatives that we have ongoing right now. Both our climate action plan, because we, we did discuss zoning plenty in, in the climate action plan process. There's also been some discussion in the Truth and Reconciliation Commission on the effects of zoning and. Land, uh, landings planning in, in the racial equity realm. And, and I, I actually touched on that a bit, because I had a conversation. With someone whose father owned barber shop in the R three. That the barber shop is now, now closed, and she was wondering if a barber shop could go in there again, because there's not really a barber shop nearby. In that neighborhood anymore, and I, I pulled up the R three and barber shop's not, that was non-conforming use. Barber shop's no longer permitted there. And one of, one of the current, in the current draft of the TRC's. Recommendations notes that the, the difficulty. In blackland businesses finding patrons, so there's some, there's some disconnect there. It's just not, not happening, and part of that, when you look at our zoning map. Maybe because in a lot of those neighborhoods, and I think back to your, your question or your issue about. Folks sort of defining their neighborhoods, that in a lot of those neighborhoods, there are no opportunities to even, in our zoning ordinance to have a, a business zone there. Any, anymore. So I think there's some opportunities there, and, and that probably means. Maybe a zoning rewrite to, to some, to some extent, and it's been a long time. And a number of the issues Jared that you, you mentioned, I know I saw Solicitor Brenneman smiling down there when you were talking about parking. Is I, I know, I'm sure you've heard as much as I have, when, when developers come in. And they say, we don't need that much parking, we come in well under that, or we need more parking, and you're getting, and you're getting waivers. And they may need variances depending on how the ordinances are drafted. And I think it's a frustration sometimes on staff that you have to even go through that, because as, as you noted. You know, I've seen those numbers and I've seen what they come up with, and it just sort of eyeballed, sometimes doesn't make a lot of sense depending on the community. It's sort of, we're using, to some extent, some of those were built on, on some sort of generalized national standards, right? And they, they don't necessarily make sense for, for our, our community. So I, I would float a couple of ideas on, on how we, how we handle this, because it's a, a big undertaking. And, and I, I know there, there're gonna be at least a, a few council members who will be interested in, in taking part. One, perhaps it makes sense to do a bit of a deeper dive first in a, in a workshop meeting. That we can sort of set aside except for some real quick issues that we dispose of. Set aside a workshop meeting to dive a little deeper in, in this and how we, how we go about both the short term and the, the long term. Recommendations than anything else the council might have, and then I think at some point after that. Rather than having frequent council workshops and meetings on this, unless that's, that's council's wish. Is to perhaps pitch it to the Sustainability and Community Planning Committee. When I, when I made those assignments, I, I made those assignments for a reason, and because I knew there was some passion in zoning and there's. Passion in, in, in climate action. And I think it has a nice overlap. I don't wanna force that on this committee. I'm just throwing it out there as a, as a suggestion. I know we all have a lot, a lot of things going on in our lives, so just allowing that, the time to consider that. And maybe allow you some time to consider that between now and, and maybe our next work, workshop meeting when we can take this up in, in more detail. So I'll be quiet now and let anybody else comment who would like to comment. Good, wait, I see the student ambassador reaching for a mic. Excited to see that. Go, go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Yeah, I'm a little bit. I love zoning. One question I had was when it comes to ADUs, accessible dwelling units. Because a lot of our urban lots can be very thin and long, and they actually have these barns that are unused. I just wanna make sure that the requiring parking behind buildings with the ADU, I was wondering, do you think that would be an issue long term?
So accessory dwelling units, I'll just start by saying, you know, nationally. ADUs are considered sort of modestly sized dwelling units. Subordinate to what's already happening on the lot. Different places zone these with sort of different performance requirements. The borough doesn't have ADU standards currently. But that's probably something to explore.
Any, any other questions, council, council picks?
I'm glad you, you beat me to the punch on the ADU, so. And yeah, if we, if we can maybe add that to our, our list. Nomenclature, the, the other prefix to parking that I think I'm happy to throw into the mix is maximum parking. I won't go into detail, just, you know, when we took a look at vacancy rates, just in our own public parking facilities. They're underutilized. And I have no doubt they're underutilized in most places, and. The idea that we develop infrastructure to deal, maybe not just even with the worst case, but with the impossible case of accommodating vehicles. It's absurd. And we need to do our due diligence to find out what that balance is, but, you know. Minimum grade, I think we should talk about maximum too. And I'm happy, as the mayor and deputy mayor see fit, to be part of those discussions. So thank you.
Here, any other comments? Council Stevie?
Sure. So I just wanted to comment particularly. In light of my attendance at zoning hearing board meetings, which I have the opportunity to attend pretty regularly. On two of the things that are in the, the short-term goal list, because I think a lot of our focus is maybe general discussion on the long-term ones. I, I think as Jared brought up, it, it, it doesn't cease to amaze me the number of times that. Individuals have to come before the zoning hearing board to get a variance on a, a lot setback. When they're attempting to construct a, a building in line with the setbacks in the, in, in the neighborhood. Which seems counterintuitive to me that we're requiring setbacks that don't match the neighborhoods. So I, I think that, I, I think that makes sense to address, and then. Secondly, regarding land, land use, particularly with simplifying it, consolidating it. I know Jared and I had a discussion after the last zoning hearing board meeting, because there are regularly topics that come up that. Are difficult for the zoning hearing board to address because they don't fit nicely into the way the zoning ordinance is written. I, I think particularly with breweries, wineries, things of that nature, it's kind of hard to mesh in, and then there was recently a case that came up. Related to an Airbnb, and whether or not that does fit the definition of bed, bed and breakfast in the borough, and, and I think that kind of gets to the. Risk of our, our zoning ordinance being too narrowly defined and then not keeping up with the real world as things change. So I, I, thank you for bringing both of those things up, is, is basically short-term things to address. And, and I think the more we can consolidate or simplify land, land uses so that. It is easier to fit scenarios that come up, I think the better. I mean, then I just had a, a general question, more so to a, a full rewrite of the zoning ordinance, and I don't know if anyone has this knowledge or not, but. Has there been a full rewrite of the zoning ordinance in the past at some point? If so, when, and if not, is it, is it more so, and this is maybe my assumption, is it more so that it's just been kind of incrementally added on to or changed as opposed to. The borough at one point taking a step back and saying, let's fully rewrite the ordinance as it, as it is.
I'm, I'm not sure if anybody has it. I can, I can tell you since two thousand five, there has not been. And I, I think the borough manager has a little bit, yeah, longer history, but at least not since then, yeah. Yeah, and I don't, I don't think since I've been, you know, since back in my law school days, I don't think there was, you can go back a little over twenty years with that. But we can get, can get that, be interesting information to have. Any other, any other comment? And I, and, and council Perry, and I know you're there, I'm not putting you on the spot, just letting you know I haven't forgotten that you're, you're out there. But does council have any other, any other comments?
My, my only other comment is, is to advocate for Jared to not have writing cramps during this process. And that there, the Cumberland County has planning grants. So I highly recommend us applying for them. As I am going off of that planning commission, I will have no. Say in it thankfully, but also I don't believe that we've asked for any of those in the four years that I've been on it, so we, we, I feel like we're due to at least try for it. And that could help us bring in maybe outside help that could assist with looking at some of this work. And also obviously like using our. Community planning counselors and maybe our planning commission to look at some of these elements as well. But yeah, I, I highly recommend us trying for that, because I think that that would be, this is not supposed to be just on one person's shoulders. So we're here for you.
And it would not be inconsistent. We, we used a consultant for the urban mixed use reforms too. So that's, you know, and that was a smaller section, so to, so, so Jared, we won't, we won't keep everything on you. I mean, I can't promise that, but. But we have, we have, have other options.
And just in general, thank you. Thank you for even starting it. Thank you for entertaining our wild ideas. And just thank you.
So cue this, cue this up for, for as soon as possible future workshop. Okay, all right, we'll do that. Okay. On to council Stevie, budget and finance. You have the big motions that I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So buckle up, we have a number of ones to get through here. So I'll, I guess, take these each individually as we consider the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. First, I move that Borough Council approve the two thousand twenty-three budget resolution.
There is a motion by council Stevie to approve the two thousand twenty-three budget resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council adopt an ordinance maintaining water rates.
Council Stevie makes a motion to adopt the ordinance maintaining water rates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? This is a roll call. Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council adopt an ordinance maintaining sewer rates.
Council Stevie makes a motion to adopt an ordinance maintaining sewer rates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council adopt an ordinance maintaining stormwater rates.
Council Stevie makes a motion to adopt the ordinance maintaining stormwater, stormwater rates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next, I move that Borough Council adopt an ordinance adding a fee of seventy-five dollars per quarter per residence for trash collection. And setting a fee of six dollars and ninety-two cents per additional tag or tag bag effective January first, two thousand twenty-three.
Council Stevie makes a motion establishing the fees for trash collection. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? I'll call the question. Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stube?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Thank you. And then moving on to the other items on the Budget and Finance Committee agenda, I move that Borough Council. Approve using American Rescue Funds, American Recovery Funds for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two revenue replacement. In the amount of three million dollars.
Council Stevie makes a motion for the approval of using American Recovery Funds. No one calls that harsh. I mean, there's an opportunity there. It's too bad. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And all those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council approve a two thousand twenty-two transfer from the General Fund. To the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of three million dollars.
Council Stevie makes a motion for a two thousand twenty-two transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council assign fund balance as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. In the amount of three million dollars in the Capital Projects Fund for future capital and council initiatives.
Council Stevie makes a motion to assign the fund balance in the Capital Projects Fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council approve a total care support contract with Hinton and Associates for information technology network support. For a one-year period effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, subject to the borough solicitors' satisfactory review and approval.
Council Stevie makes a motion to approve our IT network support contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
And then my final item, I move that Borough Council reaffirm or revise quote with Intelsight for the replacement of technology equipment.
Council Stevie makes a motion for, to reaffirm or revise quote with Intelsight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Ramsey. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And before concluding my report, I just want to again thank staff for all of your hard work and putting the budget together. You do a lot of work throughout the year, and it kind of gets all summed up in just a few short motions there, so thank you all.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Stevie. ERCP.
I just have one motion for this evening. I make the motion that Borough Council appoint Mr. Curtis Stevens to a partial term on the sewer system authority. This term will become effective immediately and shall expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by the deputy mayor to appoint Mr. Stevens to a partial term on the sewer system authority. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Mellon. Any discussion?
My only comment is that this is the third board that Mr. Curtis Stevens has, has offered his time. And so there are other boards still open for.
For Mr. Stevens.
For other people other than Mr. Curtis Stevens. So Parks Interact, he's one, the Latour Regional Authority.
I'd just like to note, a former submariner?
Yes, that is correct.
Multitasking.
No other words.
In, in tight spaces. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, sorry, sorry, those opposed, say nay. And the motion passes.
That completes my report.
Public safety. I make a motion that Council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough Carlyle adopted by ordinance twenty thirty-two and thereafter amended with respect to chapter two forty-four vehicles and traffic to add one on-street handicapped parking space at sixty-six East Penn Street and remove one on-street handicapped parking space located at sixty-eight East Penn Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hicks. Any discussion? Call the question. Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stewby?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, I move that Council approve the two thousand twenty-two active volunteer firefighters list that qualify members of Union Fire Company and fire and rescue for the reimbursement of earned income tax credit and real estate property tax credit in accordance to ordinance twenty-three twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that's all I have. Council Perry, would, would you like Council Stewby to, to take this portion of the, the agenda or are you, you good by Zoom?
No, Jeff, Jeff, if you could take it, I'd appreciate it.
Happy to do so.
Thank you.
Yep. So there are four items on the Public Works Committee agenda this evening. First, I move that Borough Council approve the October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two proposal from Gannett Fleming Incorporated to provide engineering services related to planning, evaluation, and preliminary design process improvements for PFOS treatment at the Carlyle Water Treatment Plant for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, subject to the borough solicitors' satisfactory review and approval of the amendment.
Council Stewby makes a motion to approve the October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two proposal from Gannett Fleming to, to provide planning, evaluation, preliminary design for those nasty PFOS. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Perry. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council adopt an ordinance providing for the acceptance of Springview Street, Brookside Drive, Short Lane, a portion of Hauser Lane, and other public infrastructure constructed by Latort Meadows Associations as part of the Latort Meadows Land Development Plan.
Council Stewby makes a motion to adopt an ordinance providing acceptance of several, several streets and public infrastructure constructed by Latort Meadows Associates. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Perry. Any discussion? I'll call the question and then it's a roll call. Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stewby?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Next, I move that Borough Council award the bids for purchase of various chemicals used at the Carlyle Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants to the lowest responsive bidders as outlined in the attached bid tabulation. The annual contract term shall be from January first, two thousand twenty-three to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Council Stewby makes a motion to award the bids for the purchase of chemicals used at the water and wastewater treatment plants. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Perry. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And finally, I move that Borough Council authorize the reduction in the amount of financial security posted by Builder Services Group Incorporated for the Phase One Land Development Plan for Northside Village on Lot Four of the former IAC site in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Council Stewby makes a motion for the reduction of financial, financial security regarding Northside Village on Lot Four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Perry. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the motion passes.
And that concludes the Public Works Committee report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stewby. Sustainability and Community Planning, Council Hicks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Solicitor, correct me if I'm wrong, I have two, possibly three items tonight, the third one being contingent on the second. But I move that Borough Council adopt an ordinance to vacate seven streets and alleys at the two-hundred block of H Street and the thirteen-hundred block of Northwest Street.
There's a motion by Councilor Hicks to adopt an ordinance vacating seven streets and alleys at the two-hundred block of H Street and the thirteen-hundred block of Northwest Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any discussion?
I, I should have caveated this, that this is one of the two items that we removed from the table at the beginning of the meeting. Just to keep everyone up to speed.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. That is a roll call vote.
Mr. Ramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Stewby?
Aye.
And Mayor Schultz?
Aye.
The motion passes.
And I move that Council grant the modification or waiver of SAVL requirements for the submission of preliminary subdivision land development plan for Hidden Meadows depicting the location of all mature trees on the property and limiting lot frontage to one driveway.
Council Hicks makes a motion for a modification or waiver of SAVL requirements for Hidden Meadows. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council, by Deputy Mayor Landis. Any discussion?
I, I, I do, since we have someone here from the development and I've been part of the planning commission discussions kind of in line with our theme of zoning language. I did want to give the opportunity for the developer to articulate in the best way that they know possible what, what exactly the undue hardship they are entertaining as a result of requiring, requesting a waiver of the preliminary land development. That was not part of, of the formal planning commission process and I am very open to having an informal sharing of, of what, what the undue hardship is in, in, in your firm's understanding, if you will indulge me with that. Thank you. And I will just add that I am trying to reconcile my mind in compliance with Section two twenty-six dash fourteen of our zoning ordinance. Thank you. The floor is yours. Thank you for being here tonight.
Okay. Yes. Good evening, Council. Your question was concerning the the hardship for the request for the waiver of a separate preliminary plan submission.
Yes, sir.
The, this project, as, as you know, as you see on the screen here, this is the existing conditions, but there's the proposed conditions. There you go. Is, is all one project. It's not intended to be done in phases. They're having a separate preliminary plan process and then review of the same plan during the final stage. I, I, you know, I don't feel it would serve, for, serve the council much purpose in, in, in any way. So we, and as you know, we've, we've been back to the planning commission and to the council multiple times. We probably haven't really saved any time by going with separate plans, but, you know, we've felt that because it's not phased and because, you know, we, we could show you everything in one plan and not need, you know, multiple plans for phasing or anything like that, that this would be sufficient.
Thank you. I've been part of the discussions and, and there, there was no other compliance issues that came to my mind, but just as, as being as compliant as I can to, with the language of, of the zones. Would, would it be fair to say it would be some sort of financial hardship to delay to wait for a preliminary plan for your firm to, to wait longer?
It would be financial untime.
Okay, that Council, that satisfies Councilor Hicks definition of what undue hardship is, but it helps me look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
There would be, there would be no additional benefit to it. You'd effectively, if you had to submit both, you'd just change the label. You'd change the title on it.
Right.
Yeah, file the preliminary and then submit the same, same plan. Right, okay. Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I'll use this opportunity. I've had a little bit of discussion to entertain ways that I won't have to ask people to stand up and ask maybe obvious questions in the future. This is very vague language and what, what is exactly undue hardship? And I think we have an opportunity to maybe clean that up. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, thank you. There's a motion-
Wait, the second, I think we seconded.
Yeah, there was a motion in the second. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And based on the, that motion passing, I have my final item. I move that Council approve a final subdivision and land development plan for Hidden Meadows Rental Townhome Communities submitted by RJ Fisher and Associates court-aided on behalf of Hidden Meadows of Carlyle LLC to develop a four-point-seven-three acre parcel located in the R-two medium-density residential zoning district with thirty-seven townhouses and associated facilities on one consolidated lot subject to the applicant's acceptance and satisfactory, satisfactory resolution of the conditions imposed by staff.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion to approve the final plan submitted by Hidden Meadows of Carlyle, subject to the conditions imposed by staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. On the new business, this gives another opportunity, this gives another opportunity for citizens to be heard. If, if you hadn't thought of what you wanted to talk about earlier in the meeting, this is another, another chance for you. Is, is there anybody who'd like to come forward, provide any additional comment tonight? Is there anybody by Zoom? No one's, no one's left by Zoom except for Council Perry. So we'll begin with reports from, from council members and staff and Council Perry, since, since you're by Zoom, so I don't forget you there. Is there anything you'd like to report on?
No, there isn't. Just want to say happy holidays to everybody and be safe.
Thank, thank you. Happy holidays. Mr. Powers?
I actually do have some news. On behalf of law school, President Ben Dupooty, who is the president of Penn State main campus undergrad and all Penn State schools, recommending that the Penn State reunite the two law schools. I just want to make sure everyone knows that the Penn State tickets in law have its primary location in Carlyle. So woo, it's all good news. And is led by our Law Dean, Dean Conway. There is going to be a panel of students alongside her that will be making decisions in the future. We do not know anything right now, but I will keep you updated regarding this reunification of the two law schools. But it's all good news for the community and I just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank, thank you for, for more publicly sharing of that, that fantastic news. Ambassador Fisher, headshot.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few updates also. First of all, just an update on the calendar. The fall two thousand twenty-two semester will end on December seventeenth, which is this coming Friday. Looking forward, the spring semester will start with new student orientation on January twenty-first, which is a Saturday, and then classes are set to begin the following Monday, January twenty-third. As we approach the end of the semester, I'd just like to offer a reminder that Dickinson's athletic competitions, music performances, art exhibits, and art forum lectures are all open to the public. And in addition, we were excited that several of our campus groups were able to participate in the Holly Jolly Jubilee in downtown Carlyle last week that included the Dickinson Arts Collective. And I heard that they helped with about a hundred ornaments for the kids. So that was exciting for them to be involved in that. Lastly, we recently realized that this academic year marks the twentieth anniversary of the Carlyle Borough Student Ambassador Position at Dickinson. So to commemorate that, I'm organizing a history of the position with Dickinson's archives and special collections. As part of that, I would invite all of you to share any information or memories you have from working with past ambassadors of a formal process for how to do that in the spring semester, but I just wanted to celebrate that and also just put that on your radar. So.
We'll have to, we'll have to be sure to, to, to have former councillor and mayor, Tim Scott, involved in that since, since his initiative at the beginning. Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
Council Mellon?
I have nothing at this time.
Council Stewby?
I have nothing for this evening. Thanks.
Council Ramsey?
Try to be quick. So this is our last meeting of the year. I just wanted to thank the Borough Manager, our Solicitor, all of our department heads. You know, we come to these meetings and I think it's great that we get to do the final votes on things and run through these agendas, but really the work that our, our Borough staff does day, day out is top-notch and we're lucky to have them. So have a safe, happy holidays. Hopefully get some time off. I can't grant you that, but hopefully you have some time to enjoy the holidays and we'll see y'all next year. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll, I'll echo Council Ramsey's comments. I mean, we've been, we've been through a lot the last few years. We've continued plugging ahead with a number of important initiatives and and most of that is, is due to, to the fine staff we have in the borough and we, I know I, I'm constantly receiving many, many, many more compliments out, out in the public for the job our, our staff does. So thank you all. I had to attend and participate in the, the holiday parade last, last week, which I'm always surprised how relatively well attended that is because I know I don't want to be out in the cold usually, but, but we have a lot of residents committed to being out there, getting, getting their chairs by the, by the curb. So it was a great, great event. Thank you. Thank you again, Andrea, for helping put that together. And then we had the tree lighting on, on Saturday, some, some, some music and, and Santa has, has left the building. He's, but, but another thank you to, to Santa for showing up, showing up for that one. Deputy Mayor Landis?
Yes, so Ann already brought up that the semester is ending and I work at Dickinson College and I'm really excited for it. It's been a semester. But I worked with lots of students and I'm just going to give a quick little shout out because I worked with a whole bunch of different classes for a range of different things. And they didn't always present. Sometimes they present to us and there's documents coming your general direction from multiple people once we get them in. But Heather Betty's class, Environmental Research and Civic Engagement, has been working on a comprehensive report on Cumberland County Food Assessment. It's a fifty-five pager. I know because I've worked on the in-design document for days now. But it's also a wonderful resource and I've used it, the previous one, to advocate for really thoughtful change and, and ways that we can invest to make sure that all of our residents have access to food. So that's next week, next week, December fourteenth, two thirty to four. And I think I sent it all to council. Alyssa Decker, also in environmental science, had a green infrastructure class and they, they did six projects, group projects, three focused on the borough, two on campus, and one was a bridge on campus, but in the borough realm. And they thought of different opportunities for green infrastructure to adjust lots of stormwater issues, but other just general planning. So those are forthcoming. Neil Larry's guiding the Baird Fellows, who Ann is one of those, and she will be presenting next week. Is that right? Yes. For Parks and Rec, so the nine students, I think it's nine of you, six? Oh, there's six. It was nine before. That's right. So Carlyle Recreation Survey Analysis Report, Sustainable Land Management Alternatives Report, and Carlyle Borough Recreation and Open Space Ordinance Recommendations. That's what's coming at us. And also many of us have gotten emails from Professor Hans Fister's first-year seminar on climate action. So they sent us a whole number of ideas and these are the first semester that they're here on campus and they're already engaging their councillors and mayor. One of the emails simply started by saying, imagine a flea market. And that captured my attention because I love a good flea market. The last class that I worked with was Tulio Pagano and he had another first-year seminar and it was on Carlyle. And I had a whole stack of historical societies, like quarterly documents. And so I handpicked all the ones and I was like, you should read these over the summer. And he did and he used those in, in his class. And I met with his class a couple of weeks ago and had a lively discussion. So it's been a wonderful semester working with students and having them provide stuff for us, giving guidance back. And my last thing is, sorry, it's all about Dickinson tonight, but it is. I'm advisor to the radio station. The radio station is in here in town, WDCD. And I just found out there, we're number twenty-two, best college radio station out of three hundred and eighty-eight schools. So little Carlyle, little sleepy radio station. I'm proud of my kids. And I'm very excited about all the work that I got to work on this semester with the students. So thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council Hicks?
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to preview, I'll give you sort of the bottom line upfront, the- Uh, the, uh, my students at Johns Hopkins, uh, eight of them had dedicated, uh, their time to completing a local government ops, uh, greenhouse gas inventory, which we got the opportunity in detail to brief, uh, Mr. Wilson on that. Um, I, I'll just give you sort of the, the highlights and I, I will work with the mayor and deputy mayor to give a little bit more in-depth to counsel at the right time. But, um, uh, it's about four thousand mega tons of CO2 through government operations. So if you apply what is roughly about a hundred dollars per ton of social cost of carbon, we can factor in about four hundred thousand dollars a year that we are affecting negatively with our choice of carbon emissions, which isn't a little, but relative to our budget, it, it's not exorbitant either. Um, and, and so, um, this is our first effort to actually really put some numbers to, uh, the way we operate our business and, and to help us think through some of the best, um, ways of mitigating those activities. And, um, they're literally coming in as I'm sitting here, um, the final assignments to actually make recommendations for specific areas, sectors, buildings, fleet vehicles, employee commutes, uh, water and wastewater, these things. And I look forward to, um, kind of filtering those for Jared's use. And, um, a, as we have agreed, you know, the, the next year he'll be developing a municipal ops plan where, um, we'll start to get a little bit more specific about how we bring those numbers down. And, um, so, uh, you know, we were able to, to connect our ClearPath subscription with Johns Hopkins. It all happens magically, but we will have another inventory there. Um, we voted on the Climate Action Commission to do, uh, another community greenhouse gas inventory, believe it or not. Uh, it's already been five years, uh, since the last one. Uh, we were already looking back a couple of years. So this is a, this is already about the increment that they recommend every three to five years to do a new one. So we will go back into starting that data collection again and, and have, um, if I don't get fired at Hopkins, we'll, I'll have another team doing our community greenhouse gas inventory, which is a, a great avenue for us to, uh, get important stuff without taking time from our fine staff members for all the things we ask them to do, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. Uh, Borough Manager Armstrong, anything from staff?
Sure. Very quickly, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity first and foremost to thank, as some of you have said, Team Carlyle. Uh, we got a great staff, both, uh, here and behind the scenes, you know, uh, uniformed officers, uh, non-uniformed staff that, you know, continue to step up and serve this community on a daily basis with, uh, the most professionalism and competency that, uh, you'll see unmatched anywhere as far as I'm concerned. So I just appreciate everything that, um, they do. And, um, I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank Council for the opportunity to have served this community for this year as your Borough Manager, um, and the confidence that you displayed and entrusted in me. So I appreciate that on all your guidance and support throughout the year. And the Solicitor, he provides great legal counsel on a weekly basis.
And sits there stoically. Thank you for recognizing Solicitor. It's a very important position. So Solicitor Bretman, have, have a Merry Christmas and a, and a Happy New Year. Thank, thank you for your, for your service through, through the years. And that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.